Good evening, welcome to the Norwood Board of Selectmen's Meeting for the 28th of January 2020. This evening we're starting early at 6:30 for the purpose of an executive session. And we're going to get right into that and we'll hopefully be back on the air for the regular meeting, the Pledge of Allegiance and so on at 7:00 PM. So with that said, we are going into executive session to discuss purpose number six of the 10 items that the Attorney General has on his website. And that would be to consider the purchase, exchange, lease of value of real property if the Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public party. And I so declare that. So it's the intent now to go into executive session. Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Mr. Haja?
Aye.
And the Chair votes yes. So we'll be going into executive session and hopefully back on the air by 7:00 PM. Thank you all. Good evening, welcome to the Norwood Board of Selectmen's Meeting again for the 28th of January. Earlier this evening at 6:30, we went into an executive session for some discussion. And we were hoping to get back by 7 o'clock, so I apologize for the $10, $10 minute delay. So with that said, let us pledge allegiance to our flag and have a moment of silent reflection and a prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all and please be seated. Well, we've completed our 6:30 executive session, now at 7:00 PM or shortly thereafter, we are meeting with the Planning Board to take a vote to appoint an interim member to the Planning Board to fill a vacancy resulting from the resignation of Deborah Homewood. So, Mr. Patrick Kowski, would you like to start off?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we know, two years ago, Tom Meeting agreed to add an associate member to the Planning Board who would sit in on special permit applications in the event of a board member was unavailable or as in this case tonight, a board member resigned before their term was up. A few months ago, the Planning Board appointed Brian Hatchey, to my left, as our associate member. Since that time, Brian has attended and participated in all of our meetings. He is also now sitting on a special permit hearing as a voting member. It is the Planning Board's unanimous recommendation to nominate Brian onto the Board as a full voting member until the April election. And just, Mr. Chairman, if I could, just tonight, we have Rob Bamber and Joe Sheehan from the Planning Board and some of you may or may not, this is Brian Hatchey, who's an attorney, an attorney and has some zoning background and has really taken an interest in the Board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. And just so the people at home know, this is an interim appointment up until the election day and at that point in time, either Brian will continue to run on the ballot or anybody else can run on the ballot, but it'll be up for election on election day. So with that said, comments from the Board at all? Mr. Haja?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Great to all be here. I think those that might have had doubts a couple of years ago when this whole thing was being talked about and then implemented, now see the smooth transition. In the case where a member resigns, we can bring someone right in without missing a beat and go forward to the election. So, congrats to all of you, great selection and I'm glad the process works. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else? Mr. Maloney?
Mr. Chairman, I've seen Mr. Hatchey in action at these meetings, I think he'll do a very good job.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else?
I have a nomination for Mr. Hatchey to act as interim member of the Planning Board.
And I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, Brian.
Brian, good luck. If you see Chief out there, would you send him in? Chief Brooks?
Oh, we're running ahead of schedule.
Have a tendency to get back a little. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, sir.
For those of you at home, we're meeting with Chief George, yeah, Chief George Blassey. I'm okay tonight, aren't I?
Gee, that's way, that's way back.
I'd rather, I'd rather the $10.
Had to quit while I'm ahead. Chief William G. Brooks III, Chief of the Norwood Police Department, to give us his monthly summation of activities. And it's all on you.
Thank you, gentlemen, good evening. So a few things as we wrap up the year, I know sometimes your, the Board's interested in overdose figures and where we are with the drug picture. So, in all of 2019, we had 20 overdoses and two of those being fatal. The year before, we had 31 overdoses and five fatal. So it was a significant drop and you remember just two years before that, we had just under 50 overdoses in a year with five fatalities. So, in the course of about four years, we've gone from 50 a year to 20 a year and the fatalities cut from five to two. So I just think that that's, that's interesting. I will also point out that, you know, we continue to work on this issue. As you know, Deputy Chief Kelly heads up a program that's countywide called Norfolk County Outreach where all of the police agencies in Norfolk County enter all of their overdoses into a database that provides for automatic notification to the agency where the person lived. And then that triggers follow-up. He oversees that project. It's been funded by the Norfolk District Attorney, Mike Morrissey, but Deputy Chief Kelly heads up the police side of it. You know, we have, aside from the Deputy Chief, we also have officers Greg Scher and Brian Sidroni who then follow up and do outreach, not just on overdoses, but people who we identify as being at risk or in the midst of addiction. And they not only reach out initially, but also do follow-ups. So we don't, we don't take any credit for the reducing overdose numbers, we're actually seeing reductions throughout the state. But in any event, just to bring you up to speed on what we do with that issue. I know from time to time, you're interested in what we have going on for training, you know, we always have, we always have some form of training underway. Our in-service training in the last month has involved a focus on stress. You may have read or you may know that this is a hot topic in the law enforcement field at this particular time. More officers die from suicide than die from assailants. And so we're particularly interested in the mental wellness and the mental health of our, of all of our employees, not just Swan, but all of our employees. So, the training that we conducted this month had to do with that, had to do with stress. It's actually also a state mandate. The folks from our Employee Assistance Program also came in and made presentations. The department was broken into four groups for this particular evolutionary training. So the EAP came in four times and made presentations to the offices. They also have an app that goes on their phone. We've ensured that all of our officers have that app on their phone. And the other side of the in-service training has been defensive tactics. And what we're going into in this next round will be night firing and then we'll be doing some tactics and active shooter training during February vacation, so that's coming You know that Detective Sergeant Peter Curran retired in November. And you know that in the rank of sergeant, I mentioned I think last month, that Kevin Joseph had been promoted to the rank of sergeant. Over the course of the last week, we've assigned Sergeant Tim McDonough to move into the Bureau of Criminal Investigation to head that up as the department's new Detective Sergeant. So, he'll actually undergo a penning ceremony, which is a week from Thursday, so it's Thursday of next week at 4:00 in the afternoon at the police station. So, we welcome Detective Sergeant McDonough. That's a job that's close to my heart, I was in that position for 14 years, so it's interesting to watch somebody else take that position, which is obviously a crucial one at the department. Yes, two more quick items, if you watched on the news, a barricaded subject in Hingham where there was actually a hostage for a short period of time. The Hingham Police handled it initially, but then called in Metro SWAT. I think I've mentioned to you before, we're part of the Metropolitan Law Enforcement Council. I have a sergeant and three officers who are assigned to Metro SWAT. The situation was a little different because although a lot of the work they do is barricaded subjects, the subject actually fired on the officers and hit one of the armored vehicles a couple of times. I just wanted you to know that three of our four SWAT officers were on scene for that. They're fine, all of the officers on scene were fine. They actually ended up using a fire department ladder truck to rescue the subject who was in the back bedroom to get him out. And then negotiators from Metro were able to talk the subject out after a few hours of a standoff. But anyway, our officers are safe, but it's just interesting to know that when there's a call-out like that, the reason we don't have a SWAT team or any other city town doesn't have a SWAT team is because Metro covers about 45 cities and towns and we have a sergeant and three patrol officers who are dedicated to that. So they were there on Saturday. And then lastly, I think that, we may have talked about this before, excuse me, but that is that as we buy new Cruisers, we had looked to go green this year. And it's been somewhat of a frustration in that Ford had been very slow to deliver the hybrid cars that we had ordered. And the holdup was not at the dealership, but back at Ford. And we've been notified this week that three of what will be our marked units, our radio cars have arrived at the dealership and they're in the paint shop this week. They come through as black cars and we paint all four doors on the top white. And then they go up for what we call upfitting, which is blue lights and prisoner petition and siren and radio and mounting of the laptop and this whole process and the graphics on the doors and fenders, that's all called upfitting. And that's a process that will take a few weeks as well, but I think within the next month or so, you'll see that we'll have hybrid SUVs on the road. A little bit more expensive than the cars that we used to buying, but fuel savings in the long run and more to the town's focus on sustainability. So I just wanted to mention that they...
If I had to interrupt just for one second, I think SUVs make so much more sense. You can get more equipment in them and so on and so on. There's just a lot of benefit personally, a lot of benefit to the SUV as opposed to a sedan.
Well, you know, the charges when we had them, they served us well, but you know, we did a survey of our offices and we asked about questions about comfort and handling and all of that sort of thing. We took a look at all of the information we got back, there was a strong preference for the SUV model. So we bought a round of SUVs and now we've ordered SUV hybrids. So that's what's coming, that's what's coming next, yeah. So I think that's all I have, I'll answer any questions anybody has.
Okay, Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Howard.
On the hybrids, are those electric or what are they?
They have, they have a gas motor, but they also run, in other words, as I understand, the gas motor charges it.
Oh, okay, I get that.
So it's electric for period, the gas motor kicks in when it's needed and then shuts off?
That's much better, obviously, because the full electrics have a limited, limited distance that they can go, you know, might not even make a whole shift, you know?
The distances they go, they can go, that's right, and how they perform. These, you know, you might know, because I've mentioned it before, but for the public, the Michigan State Police, who have always bought a lot of cars because of the nature of their work, have always done, they run trials on all of the cars being offered by the manufacturers for police work. And the Michigan State Police trials have become kind of the gold standard. They do the testing, they issue a report and then everybody reads the Michigan State Police trials to see which Cruisers perform the best and which have the quickest braking and that sort of thing. And these hybrids, I think, scored, they're the second highest of all the vehicles tested for performance.
But they still got the pep when you need it?
They still have the pep when you need it, yeah, they have good top end, they have good handling, they have good braking, braking distances. And they're, they're projected by Ford to save over $3,000 per car per year in fuel savings with the hybrid motor. So, we're looking forward to, we're going to have three of them and we'll see how they run.
Thank you, Chief, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Maloney, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Chief.
Question regarding the reduction in the number of overdoses, you said it was interesting. Do you, do you have an opinion as to what factor or factors might be in play here? Is it better interdiction at local, state and federal levels? Is it reduction in supply from overseas? What do you think it is?
I think it's, I think it's everything. I think sometimes when there's a complex problem, shifting in the rate has to do with all of the attention paid, not just any one thing. You know, so the police, we've always been this way in that we've been proactive, reaching out to people who are addicted, trying to move them into treatment, rather than taking just a criminal justice approach. The criminal justice approach is important certainly in locking up traffickers and even arresting people with drugs, sometimes there's leverage to move them into treatment, but then also just reaching out to people who are addicted and offering them treatment. I think that what the governor's done around pharmaceutical opiates has been helpful. I think all of the attention paid to it, I think the availability of more beds, more programs available. I just think that there's been a lot of effort and a lot of focus, some legislative, some by the police, some by the courts, some by the treatment community. And I think that all of that has combined, this is not going on in all states, some states are still seeing gradual upticks. But Massachusetts has seen a decline, I think this is the second year. Massachusetts figures, by the way, are only fatalities because their information comes from the office of the Chief Medical Examiner. We track fatal and non-fatal, so we can see the broader picture. But anyway, fatal overdoses in Massachusetts are down slightly, I think for the second, second year in a row. And I just think that the state has done a good job, the administration's done a good job. There's been a lot of focus, there's been a lot of attention on it. And I think all of that adds up. You know, we, we know people that were actively addicted just two years ago that are currently in treatment or that are out of treatment and doing better, that I think had it not been for everyone's effort, that might not be. And I think that that's led to the drop in overdoses. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Anything else from the Board? Mr. Haja?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, welcome, Chief, thanks for your...
Thank you, sir.
Good monthly report, I appreciate to read it. Just congratulations again to Sergeant Joseph as a finding man. The one thing I've come to know is that we have really, really, really good department heads and Tony happen and typically pick really good people, so I have no doubt that Mr. Joseph will do quite well for you and looking forward to the future. It was good to read that while you investigated two liquor incidents, there were no violations found, that that's a good thing, that we always try to pay attention to. Involved with Paul Murphy with Impact Norwood, so I always see him, I love the effort that he puts in and along with Jim Mahoney about at the schools. It's so important to have that touch with the younger people so they don't become fearful of the police, they look at you folks as sisters and friends and helpful individuals, so that's a good thing. Just on one of the things where Sergeant Murphy Mahoney attends a school safety meeting with Lieutenant Patton, Sub-Lieutenant Schools, Dr. Thompson, was that a scheduled thing or was that due to an incident?
Oh, no, that, that wouldn't be incident-driven. I would...
It's typically scheduled?
Which one are you referring to? I just, is that under training?
No, it's under the report of the School Resource Officer, Officers Mahoney and Murphy. It says, SROs Murphy and Mahoney attended, it's at the, second from the bottom on that, on that page.
Oh, no, that was not incident-driven. We meet with the school department, quite frankly, you know, several, several times a year. This was, this was not incident-driven. This was to discuss a particular strategy around safety. And it was a fruitful meeting. It was not, it was not incident-driven though.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Anything, Mr. Plasko?
Well, thank you.
I just want to compliment everybody too, to a degree, because I noticed the possession charges for classes A, B and E, there's only I think maybe a total of four charges across the board, which is a significant drop in numbers.
Yes.
And I think that's a good thing, we're seeing that there's less and less drugs on the street. And I think it's for a lot of reasons. I mean, doctors are more aware, hospitals are more aware, I think the individual users are starting to become more aware with the scare of fentanyl and so on and so on. So overall, I think you're doing a good job and I appreciate it and respect it. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
With that said, I think we're all good.
All good. Thank you, Chief. It's good to see you.
Good to see you.
Next, we have our appointment with, I'll get this right, Chief George Bereese, the Norwood Fire Department, giving us his monthly activity. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Board, Mr. Chair. I'd like to start off tonight with just some quick information. I know there's been quite a bit of overload on the news, but the novel coronavirus, I just want to let the Board know that we are prepared at the Fire Department that if we do have some type of incident with that. I am in contact with Sagal Rees from the Health Department and we've been sharing information on what precautions we need to take for our personnel. Currently, the risk is low and as of yesterday, I put out a notice on treatment protocol for our emergency medical services personnel. Basically, we call it BSI, which is Body Substance Isolation. And what that is, is that if we do come upon an individual that has a lower respiratory infection, fever, shortness of breath, difficulty breathing or cough, we will take these BSI precautions with the individual. First off, it would be an N95 mask that we would place over the individual and then we would actually have our personnel in protective gowns, masks, eye protection. And the one thing that we would ask the individual to differentiate between the coronavirus and influenza is, did they have any recent travel to China or have they been around any individuals that have had recent travel to China? If we do receive a positive indication on that, we'll take these precautions and then we'll let the receiving facility know that we transport the individual, which most of the time is Norwood Hospital. And just as information, Boston has activated their command center, there were two people today that I was notified of that were in isolation in New Hampshire. So as the virus comes closer to Massachusetts, the appropriate agencies are responding. And if anyone liked information on it, they can go to mass.gov or even better is the CDC website for any type of information on that. Last week, we had a gas leak on Eisenhower Road. Fortunately, we had a neighbor who smelled gas and first contacted the gas company, the gas company notified the Fire Department. Upon our arrival, we had a gas company member at the house. We were able to gain access and with our meters, we found extremely high levels of natural gas within the home. Captain Mark Boylan was able to quickly get one of our fans off our engine and pump fresh air into the home to try to even out the levels. It was a very dangerous situation with the level it was at. Captain Boylan had relayed to me that it did have an explosion hazard, which obviously would have been disastrous. But fortunately, we were able to get the fresh air into the home and as the gas company came, they had to dig a hole in the side of the yard and basically cap off the pipe, the gas pipe. The leak was between the gas meter and the street. And apparently, the foundation was not a full foundation, but actually had a dirt section. So when the leak started, the gas was able to follow the pipe through the dirt into the home and then fill the home up with gas. So we had a positive outcome on it, which was a good thing. I just wanted to update the Board on our brush rapid attack truck, which is, had been supported by the Board in Tom Meeting. We hope to have that in within the next couple of weeks. We'll be sending it out to get lettered and hopefully have it in service by the end of February. Quick little update on Deputy Chief David Hayes, I'd like to thank the Board for coming and supporting us in the promotional ceremony for he and Lieutenant Seamus Murphy. We've never really had a promotional ceremony like that before, we had quite a few individuals invited and I received a lot of positive feedback on the ceremony. And I think the membership of the department was happy to see us promoting the actual promotions like that, so...
It's also very intense and difficult to get to that level. How many books do they have to study? 10?
It could be eight, 10, it varies from year to year.
So that's a lot of studying while carrying on your own family life and your own occupation and so on and so on. So it was very intensive, so I congratulate both, all three candidates as a matter of fact.
Yes. And Deputy Chief Hayes has been doing great, he's been busy learning his new job, he's already started using his IT skills where he is basically cataloging all information that comes into the Fire Prevention Office. So now, instead of having to go to multiple offices to get information, all we have to do is click into this file and it'll be brought up automatically. So that's been excellent for Deputy Chief. I would like to mention that we have a retirement coming up this month. Richard Flaherty is a 39-year veteran of Norwood Fire Department. He was appointed on February 17, 1981. Richard was known as an excellent firefighter who had a great deal of knowledge, no doubt learned from his older brother Jimmy and his father, who were both Norwood firefighters. Richie was also the department's communication specialist. He managed all the radio systems, both in the vehicles and the portable radios that we carry, and the PA system for the department. He did an excellent job with that.
If you could do us a favor, we'd like to have him come before the Board, we've discussed this. We'd like to get him some recognition if we could.
Sure.
So maybe you could do that for us and find out if he's willing to come before the Board. A lot of times, they're not willing, but we'd like to show our appreciation to him.
I can do that.
Thank you, sir.
And just a couple of things that Richard had done in his career at the Fire Department, he created several training programs, two that were very important, one was on building evacuations and the other was on May Day procedures, that if a firefighter went down in a fire, the actual protocols and policies of what we should do to get that firefighter out of the building. So I'd like to wish him the best of luck in his retirement.
We'd like to show that also.
With that, the communications specialist position became available. Firefighter Tim Bailey has been chosen to take that position. He's already been busy at work, he's reprogrammed all of our portable radios and making sure that they're working correctly. And he's been in contact with some of our private vendors and learning the equipment that he needs to understand the position. And you may know the name, he's the son of Walpole Fire Chief, Tim Bailey. So, excellent kid and he's going to do a great job in that position. Quick update and very thankful to the Board that you had supported our field training officer program. That program has begun. The program is an important step in providing professional standardized training and assessment to the paramedics of the Fire Department. After working with the department's EMS coordinators, we reviewed the candidates and we came up with four individuals who we thought would be excellent becoming the field training officers for the department. Immediately after we did that, we have two individuals, two new paramedics, who have gone into the Advanced Life Support System and they've already been paired up with a field training officer. So they'll be working with that field training officer for the next, roughly the next three months, depending on how well they do with their paramedic skills.
Very good.
So to have that formalized program, I'd like to thank the Board for your support with that. And that's all I have for this evening, so...
Thank you, sir. Questions from the Board?
Please, I do, Mr. Haja?
I can't wait for the new piece of equipment. I think along with having great trained individuals, having good equipment allows your team and same with the chief of his new vehicles, to do your job the most effective way possible. So, they go hand in hand, so can't wait. And a good job in identifying all the training that you guys do, it's very, very important. And I know if you're not looking at the numbers of permits for my cards, that, you know, we're talking a significant increase over the previous fiscal year. So, it's a sign of, a sign of healthy economy in Norwood and that things are moving along because we get paid for those permits.
Yes.
So that's a good thing. I will say, I am concerned about the numbers related to the ambulance.
Yes.
The net, if you look at the net through November, we're down 57,000.
Yes.
I think that's going to be hard to make up over the next six months. So, I'm not sure what number we sort of estimated for use in the budget, but clearly, we're going to be probably under our, either our estimate or right at the estimate if we were conservative enough, which I know Tony typically is, but any, is it just the volume?
Well, for the past year, I can say that the run numbers overall for the Fire Department are down by 200 runs. So, if the majority of those are EMS runs, then we are losing that revenue. But I can't comment really as to, you know, the actual numbers on the EMS as to why, you know, it could be a run where, say normally we bill $1,500 for it, but it may be, and that's an advanced life support run, but it could be a basic life support run where we're only billing $200, $300 because it doesn't need that advanced level of care, the materials we're using, the skills used on the individual. So it's to try to predict and expect for the revenues to go up every year, I don't think that we could actually do that. There may be years where the runs go... There may be years where the runs go down.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Howard, do you have something?
Yes, just a little input on that. Of course, if you don't transport, it's zero.
Correct.
So, you get non-transports, then you get nothing out of them. It's coming back to us. I mean, you might help a person, but if you don't transport, there's no fee. I just throw that out.
I think it's more about the service we provide than the fee sometimes personally. Mr. Maloney?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's a good point. Very interesting, though, because it's something you really don't want to see go up, the numbers of runs. You'd be happy if you had none of them.
Yes.
You know, so it's probably the kind of thing, Mr. Mazzucco, when we talk about forecasting future revenues, that probably it's one of those things we ought to be as conservative as possible and more so. You know, because it's basically good news, you know?
Right. You're going to want to keep that number at 80% or 90% of what your prior year's projection is. Not only can you never really predict how many runs you're going to have, but you might have a situation where somebody's going through some serious health issues, and they may be transported eight, 10, 12 times a year to the hospital. And then, you lose somebody who you've been transporting quite a bit. And like any business model, unfortunately, it drives the revenue down. But as you said, you don't want to see the revenue go down, but obviously, you're happy when people are healthier.
Well, the other thing, too, that we're probably two and a half, I want to say two years or maybe three years out from the most recent increase in our ambulance fees, too. And I think initially, they resulted in an increase in revenues. So, if runs stayed the same and you were charging more, you know, your revenues went up. But now, we're a couple of years out from that. So, you really can't say, well, you know, we raised our prices too high or something, I don't think.
Correct.
Because, you know, we're removed from it.
So, from the time at that point, the Medicare did you up in their rates, what they're willing to pay us. And they're probably most of our runs. So, we should be getting more money from, on each of those runs than we were getting in the past.
I don't think it's a significant amount, though, for those Medicare patients.
No, but it's still an increase on every run.
The promotion ceremony was quite well done, by the way. So, there really was.
Thank you.
It was a pleasure to attend. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else from the board? Seeing nothing? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
I'm going to ask something of the board if I could. I know Mr. Mazzucco has a presentation on town-owned properties and so on. And it's going to take a little bit of time. So, I would ask the board if we could jump into, I think there are people here that like to hear a discussion on the title change from "Board of Selectmen" to "Norwood Select Board." So, if that's okay with the board, I'd like to jump down to that.
Unfinished business?
What's that?
Unfinished business?
Under unfinished business. It's, I don't want people to stay here and listen through all kinds of stuff that we may not want to sit here and listen to. So, with that said, last Tuesday night, we had a discussion on a motion that was brought up by Mr. Plasko about changing the name of the Town of Norwood Board of Selectmen to the Town of Norwood Select Board. And basically, I have to apologize as a chairman of this board because I personally think I failed not only this board, but the citizens of Norwood by not taking responsibility. We called for a second. We got none. At that point in time, I could have stepped forward and motioned it as a second for discussion. And if it got into a lengthy discussion, we could have put it off for a week. When we were presented with this particular information, we had no backup or anything to read from. So, we had no information. And I'm not using that as an excuse. But we could have put it off for a week and studied the issue and had discussions separately, of course. But not just dismiss it as we did. So, I have to follow my sword and apologize for that. Tuesday night last week, I went home, and at 12:57 at night, I woke. And I started thinking about this, and I thought for several hours, unable to get back to sleep over it. So, it has bothered me. We've got a lot of input from the public. And I think it's our job, sitting here tonight and every other night, to listen to the will of the people and to address them as appropriately as we can. And in this case, I think we may have failed, my own opinion. So, with that said, Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, if we're going to have a motion to reconsider, it has to be by a person who opposed the motion.
There was no vote.
There was no vote. So, it would not be a motion for reconsideration because we never considered.
We didn't have a vote?
We never have a vote. No, we got a motion, no second. So, it was never a vote.
Okay, that's fine, too. So, let me say this. As my fellow board members might be aware, my comments last week were that I was not necessarily opposed to this, but rather, I felt that the two new people that sat on the board after the election should have input. Well, that came back to me from quite a few people that they wanted me to just man up and vote for this issue. So, to my friends and others, I get it. I get it. So, Mr. Chairman, to get this started, I make a motion to support putting the term "Select Board" on a referendum vote.
A non-binding referendum?
Well, myself, I'd prefer a binding referendum. We can talk about that. But to me, to me, there's not much accomplished if we have a non-binding referendum. Why not have a binding referendum? I mean, what's the difference?
My opinion, and just my opinion, I'm going to ask Mr. Plasko to step in in a minute here. My opinion, if we have a non-binding referendum, the people vote. And based on that information, it goes then to town meeting, where the town meeting members take the question. They now have something to work with. They have some idea of what the people want. And some people may say, well, only 12% or 14% of the population voted. Shame on the ones that didn't. I say it again this week. So, if it goes to town meeting, they will have an opportunity to understand the vote of the non-binding referendum and govern themselves accordingly. Mr. Plasko, you have some comments to make this evening?
Just specifically to Mr. Howard's question or point about binding or non-binding. There's no such thing as a binding referendum for a local matter. Master of Law Chapter 53, 18A does allow for a non-binding public advisory question to be placed on the ballot, and that's what I referred to when I brought it up last week. So, there's different methods. You can do the referendum question, which is a non-binding question. And then, we would proceed from there based on the results. Or if you wanted to be more proactive, you could go directly to town meeting without a referendum. But that's a different action. But if you're going to do a referendum, the only option is a non-binding referendum under Master of Law 53, 18A.
Okay, then with that news in mind, I make a motion that we go to the ballot with a non-binding referendum on this issue.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. On the motion?
On the motion?
You want to speak, sir?
Yeah.
Sure. Go.
Just, no, just a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. I don't, you're a gentleman, and I love you to pieces. I don't think you owe anybody an apology. I think you handled it fine. I mean, the matter came up. It was on the agenda as a matter for discussion. We did discuss it. At some point, a motion was made. Mr. Plasko made a motion. And none of his colleagues chose to second it, probably because we all felt, at least I did, that more discussion was needed on it, and we weren't ready to vote on it at that time. That doesn't mean we wouldn't vote on it in the future. There was no urgency on the matter at that time. There still isn't, frankly. But in the intervening seven days, we all took time to think about it, to confer and to discuss. And we're probably better off for having delayed. It's just part of what we do here. We don't, if you're not comfortable voting on something, you shouldn't. And you certainly shouldn't allow yourself to be stampeded into voting when you're not ready to do so. So, I think, actually, the delay of seven days will work, will redound to the benefit of all here. For my own part, I know we all receive certain communications from people, emails, phone calls, and some conversations in person. And really, I mean, there were a few emails that, you know, frankly, I would describe as offensive if they weren't so puerile. But that's a minority, and there's no need to dwell on it because the good Lord did invent or create the delete button. However, most of them, at least most of the people I engaged with approached the matter in a reasonable way, in a spirit of mutual respect and goodwill. And it was a pleasure to engage them, and it was edifying to me. Just a couple of things. I want to thank them, too, by the way, for those who dealt with the matter in a mature way. Just a couple of things, Mr. Chairman, and then I'll be done. Couple of conversations. I had one person, a woman who's a real estate investor, say to me, let's see if I get this right, "You should support this referendum. And even, no matter what you feel about it, you better hope it passes." And I said, "Why?" She said, "Real estate values." She said, "People who are town shopping like to see, like to find themselves," and this is not my expression, "like to find themselves in places that have more future than past." Sort of forward-thinking and all. So, I said, "Well, if it's real estate values, at least it's a logical argument. I don't know if it's true." And finally, one other person that I talked to who lives in another town, and I've known him for about 45 years, made the, went through the whole thing. And he sort of shares my own pessimism about using the referendum as a tool for crafting public policy. He did say, "In this case, you should take the populist approach because if you do the referendum and then you go to town meeting, as long as you're committed to doing both within that same, what, month, a month and a half window, you will have a contemporaneous opinion, and town meeting will thank you for it because town meeting members will go in there and say, 'I'm going to vote the will of the people,' whether it was yes or no." And they will do that, and the matter will be settled pretty quickly at town meeting rather than having a big battle on its own. Anyway, those are the reasons why I second the motion, and I intend to vote in favor of it. And I'm fortunate in having a whole lot of friends who are smarter than I am. So, oh, my friend said, "By the way, don't be a stubborn old crank." And I said, "I'm not old." Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Again, in rebuttal, my own opinion, I don't think so much it's about town shopping or real estate values. I think it comes down to doing the right thing. The Mass Municipal Association this week at our convention passed it right through like that, no issue. And again, I know, I have spoke to my colleague, Mr. Maloney. He would prefer that I not apologize. But this seriously bothered me, and it has bothered me all week. And I've been getting emails all week, and I got another three or four tonight before the meeting. Again, I personally think I didn't do the right thing. There was a moment when there was a motion, and there was a dead silence, and a lot of things were going on in my head. And one of the options was to do something about it, and I failed to do that. And by doing that, I would have put it off a week or make that recommendation or whatever. But I failed to do it. Anyway, we are here tonight, and we have a motion. On that motion?
Yes, on the motion, for the right commissary chairman. So, thank you for allowing me. As I stated last week, when this matter was before us, I was torn when thinking about renaming or support renaming of this board from its long-held historical name, "Board of Selectmen." Over this past week, I heard from many residents. I am grateful for their time and effort in providing feedback to me as an elected official. Democracy in action, which is all we can ask for. I am not here for me. I am here as a result of the voters of Norwood who supported my candidacy, one of which was that I consider myself a good listener. While I truly believe the current name, "Board of Selectmen," was not and is not purposely named for men only, it was, as has been pointed out, a sign of the times when only men served as public leaders. Norwood has been greatly and proudly served by four women on this board, and this upcoming election may have a fifth. My special appreciation goes out to those that submitted constructive feedback, positive feedback, which guided the reasons for changing the name and asking for reconsideration based on several identified factors. I appreciate those types of feedback from my good friends, Bob Donnelly and Teresa Stewart, and to Dr. Frank Adams, to name a few. In today's social media world, there are some who you can just not disagree or face extreme pushback. That's okay. It's the world we live in. I just wish people would read what they write before hitting send. What I have also come to realize is that my vote in this motion neither supports or rejects the name change, only the ability for residents to weigh in on this matter. This methodology can, one, give good feedback to town meeting members before they vote at special town meeting, which has been talked. Two, can provide a message that younger generation do not fully share, the name, "Board of Selectmen," which was not meant to support just men. I can see that. If the name of the board was "The Board of Selectwomen," would I, as a man in 2020, think it incorrect? Yes, I would. Finally, is the name, "Board of Selectmen," truly historical in nature to save the same as tearing down a historical statue representing a specific occurrence or the wording on a plaque dedicated to a historical event, et cetera? I think not. It's a name created as a means to identify a group of local leaders in charge. It's historic in preference to a specific time period, not necessarily to a title earned through what they accomplished. If that name is to change, then let's see what town residents will vote, what town meeting members will say and vote, and finally, the legislature as a result of a positive vote by town meeting. I therefore will support the motion to put this ad to the voters. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to my fellow colleagues.
Thank you. Anything else from the board? Mr. Plasko?
Thank you. I think I said most things I would want to say last week. But I'd just like to follow up this week with saying, once again, that I do believe that words matter, that words shape perceptions and the perceptions of power. I think it's appropriate to, on this issue, to reach out and get the public opinion. So, I definitely support the motion for the referendum. But I'd like to make it clear, I go one step further. I support the motion at the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Okay, we have a motion to change the name, send it to a, let me strike that, to send a non-binding referendum forward, changing the name of the Norwood Board of Selectmen to the Norwood Select Board. That will mean that there will be a non-binding referendum on the ballot, and those results will go to town meeting, and they will govern themselves accordingly at that time and do the right thing, I suppose. So, with that said, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous? Passed?
Can I ask a question? Bill will probably know, you should know, Mr. Chairman, if it does pass, which I expect it will on April 6, is there time enough to put it on the warrant for town meeting?
Yes, we need to do some work if we're going to do that because it could get a little bit involved. But we can put articles, I would actually suggest two articles, on the town meeting warrant for the special town meeting, and that's after the election. So, as Mr. Maloney said, the people would be guided by how, the town meeting members would be guided by how the public voted. And as our position, we could either favor it or oppose it, perhaps based on that same reasoning. But so that if you want to keep it moving, should it pass, then we certainly just put articles on the town meeting warrant. We'll have to do a little work, myself, with town council, someone will have to do a little work to get them in the right order, but there's plenty of time to do that.
So, I know, so that we're not rushed, if we know that it's probably going to come up in some way form later. So, start doing it now. So, that we are fully prepared in that we're not trying to cram a lot of articles beforehand.
Well, we need to, when we set, actually, set the town meeting date, which actually won't be that far down the road. We'll need to have the, at least the article language, and then by town meeting, the motion language. And I'll start working on that if you'd like.
That was going to be my next question one day.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
The town meeting begins, what, second Monday, second Monday in May? Second Monday in May, that's the 11th. So, we probably have to, the article that we put on the special would have to be voted by us 35 days before that. So, which would go one, two, three, four, five. So, the article has to be prepared prior to the, to our own election day. But that really shouldn't matter because we're going to have it on the ballot. The article doesn't tell people how to vote. It simply says you're going to have a chance to vote on it. And so, we riveted the two together, just as long as we're committed to doing it. That's all. We just do the language, and we all said.
Yep.
And Mr. Plasko is going to do that for us and make sure it moves forward in the appropriate manner. Thank you for that input. Let's get back to our new business if I could. Number one, Marsha Marty, Bay State Animal Cooperative, submitting request to host this year's fundraising dog wash, cow wash, rabies clinic, and micro-chipping clinic in the park unit across the street from the civic center on Sunday, June 14, from 9:00 a.m. till 2:00 p.m.
Motion approved?
Second.
Motion to approve that request. On that request, sir?
I'd just like to compliment this lady. I don't know how many years this has been ongoing, but this is a great thing that she puts in for dog owners. Very good, providing the chips in rabies clinic, all good stuff. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. So, I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous? Number two, discussion of land use. Letter A, low-value town properties. And B, possible pocket park locations. And I think Mr. Manager has a presentation.
I do, Mr. Chairman. We can go right into this. It'll take just a little bit of time unless you want to take other items up on your agenda, in case there's anyone else here for those items. And then, we can come to this at the end, whatever you want.
Table this and finish everything else.
Yes.
That'd be a good idea if I could. Do you mind that?
I'm here all night. I'm here all night.
So move, if you want to motion.
All right.
And I'll second that.
Thank you. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous? All right, we're going to skip over there for the town, time meeting, town meeting, here I go again, for the time being. Additional business, Mary Lou Follen, NOD town clerk, submitting notification.
Excuse me, skip number three.
Skip number three. Tony Esco, Historical Commission and Community Preservation Member, she happens to be here this evening, submitting Historical Commission request to come before the board or meet with a representative from the board to discuss Morse House uses in respect to a community preservation application. Mrs. Esco, I know you're here this evening.
I'm just going to make a motion that we set up a joint meeting.
I was going to explain why. We have a little work to do yet on the rules and regulations to the Morse House, and very shortly, we shall have that rectified. At that point in time, it is, we would like to have you and your board members come before the board at that time, and then we can all sit down and have a discussion. We don't have our side ready yet. So if that's okay with you, we'll put it off for a week or so, and we'll come together again.
Motion to set up a hearing on this matter at their request?
Second.
Okay, that will be for full hearing before the board, correct?
Yep.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous?
Thank you.
No, thank you. I didn't want to hold you up here all night either.
Appreciate it.
Number four, under additional new business, Mary Lou Follen, NOD town clerk, submitting notification that the legislature has approved a one-week early voting period for the upcoming March 3rd, 2020 presidential primary election. The early voting will begin on Monday, February 24th, and will end on Friday, February 28th. Further details will be posted on the town's website, but that will be during the day only. There'll be no night voting, and it will take place in Memorial Hall.
Motion filed.
Motion filed, and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous? I'm going to do a couple of these quick ones, we'll get back to some of the others. Number three, under unfinished business, Ibrahim Alouesu, Supreme Auto Plug, 145 Broadway, submitting application for a Class II used auto sales license. He did not renew his 220 license, and he has, he had thoughts of relocating at that time. Since then, he has negotiated with his landlord. In the meantime, we have revoked his license as of January 14th, and he would like to stay at that location if he could. So my question of the board is, do we have to have a whole entire new meeting, new hearing, or can we just move ahead and renew his license for the year 2020?
We have the hearing because of law, not because of practice, right?
Yes, because we have to have.
We can't vote to reinstate?
Even though it's already been two weeks.
I'm not sure.
Remember Donna, people?
Well, unless we're told otherwise, since he was into us within the past six months, we're going to receive the exact same information. Matter of fact, the packet of his application and everything submitted matches exactly what we approved. He's not asking for any changes. So unless I'm told that it's illegal what we're doing, I'm going to vote to reinstate the license.
I'll second that.
I would say, Mr. Chairman, if we find out through.
So can we, we just clear?
It's not.
So can we clarify the motion to approve the reissuing subject to verification with council?
Sure.
And then it's done, it's done unless council has an issue, and then you just set up the public hearing?
So the license itself is only going to expire after two weeks, and again, we took it back because he was going to leave that area because of a rent disagreement, which we negotiated with the landlord, and we want to come back two weeks roughly after we've terminated him. So the intent is to reinstate upon approval of town council, and if town council tells us we cannot do it, we'll have him back in for another meeting again on a Class II license. Does that sound good, David?
Yep.
I have a motion?
Yep.
Second?
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous? I'm jumping all over the board here, I just hope I can move it right in. Let me get down to additional unfinished business. Financial policies correction and the debt management policy. Some time ago, the Board of Selectmen, the School Committee, and the Finance Commission voted on a debt management policy, and it has changed slightly in the wording. The School Department has approved the new wording, the Finance Commission has approved the new wording, and they're asking us tonight to also approve the new wording. And the prior wording basically said, we're going to delete the term, that town will have a maximum debt limit equal to 5% of the non-utility operating budget, and replace it with, and the town will maintain annual general fund debt service levels at a target range of approximately 5% of current non-utility revenues, except for debt-excluded tax revenues. Debt service levels shall include annual debt service requirements and short-term financing costs of capital expenditures. Does everyone understand that? Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
And on the motion, Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
This is, this is, this actually was the language from the 2008 document that was issued in October of that year. Just a little bit of, I think, difference in translation when we adopted the new policies, but I do endorse the old language, and so move the way.
How about approve inside?
Is there anything to add, Mr. Plasko?
No, the same thing. I think that it got lost in translation somewhere. This is what we had all agreed to previously, so it's appropriate to change the current document that has different language to the correct language. So it's just a correction, not really a change from what our position was. So I endorse the motion.
I think you stated it best. The original intent was what I just read. Somewhere in the transcription of the document after the last April's meeting, it kind of lost its meaning a little bit, and all we're doing is going back to the original document and correcting it and bringing it forward. With that said, I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous? So we have voted on that, as has the School Department and the Finance Commission. Mr. Manager, would you like to have a discussion on land use now?
Sure, unless you want to take up the Morse House.
You want to take up the Morse House, you have a short one you have, then you can have your presentation.
Okay. Which is the board, I shall grant. Morse House applications, 1285 Washington Street. A, Patricia Bailey, 34 St. John Avenue, request Sunday, March 29th, 2020, from 12:00 p.m. till 5:00 p.m. for a private event. And B, Mr. Matthew McKee, M-C-K-E-E, the Ponson Valley Sunrise Rotary Saturday, requesting Saturday, October 31st, 2020, for 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., and to hold a no-scare haunted house attraction. Setup will begin on the 29th and 30th of October, with a cleanup date set for October 31st after the event.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to set the rates first?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I was going to say that myself, as Mr. Howard just said, I think this is not exactly stated as we had voted to table, but we voted to table till we set the rates, and then we have gotten some information over the course of the past week to have that for discussion tonight. So I think we would want to discuss that, discuss that, and then vote the others accordingly.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous?
So, you want to start discussion?
We will start discussion.
If I can, I'll lead the charge. So, after last week's discussion, or the week before, we had all wanted to give input on proposed rates, depending on types of categories we want to do. So what I did is, I think I sent out earlier today, information based on what the utility costs were for the building on an annual basis, per day basis, or whatever. Information received from the department heads through Tony, which I am grateful for. I also provided information given to me by Alan Howard regarding what the Recreation Department charges for different buildings for different hours, as well as the dayhouse. And then I put in my recommendations based on information. I know Bill has also sent out his recommendations, so I don't think everyone's way off. I think we're all pretty close. The question is, you know, what do we want those numbers to be? My recommendation was to go into different categories based on set hours of basically, you know, up to four and then over four, in whether you were a profit or nonprofit, and charging zero for any municipal use that is contemplated. And then also having the numbers regarding utilities, we know what we need to cover to ensure that it is self-sufficient, and I think that that is important. I don't think we're out to gouge the community, because it is a municipal and historic building that we want people to use and take care of and all the rest. So I put forward some numbers that hopefully folks will consider.
Thank you. Just for clarification of the people at home, what we're trying to do with, we're going to take over the Morse House, we want to cover our costs as far as maintenance of the building, water, sewer, electric, and so on. If there may be a need for a custodian, we want to make sure that's covered. If there may be a need for a police detail, and so on, and so on, and so on. So whatever costs we incur, we're not trying to make a profit by any means, but we're trying to cover enough to cover any expenses that may cost the town to operate that building. Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, the first thing I think we should consider is, is not the expenses to us for that one day. It's our cost of the building.
Entire package.
Yeah, I mean, to just say that they, they use three hours of electricity, et cetera, and heat, what about, what about the seven days before that, that we had to do the same thing for the building to keep it going, you know? So that, and again, not, not to gouge people, certainly not, but if the civic is available at a given hour, that people want this building to use, it brings the question to mind why, you know, why they want the Morse House. Is it because it's way cheaper, or, or the history behind it, or what? I mean, but that doesn't really matter. So my point to it is that we should have, we should have a reasonable fee for using the building that we're all comfortable with to cover the bases for our town. That's what I'm concerned about.
That's what we're debating here tonight. I don't need, I'm going to catch you in one moment, Mr. Plasko, but the Recreation Department has their own set of fees also, and we're pretty much in line, a little bit one side or the other, with the current usage of the civic facility. Mr. Plasko?
Yeah, I was just going to say that my numbers are a little slightly different than Mr. Jar's, and I try to approach it somewhat in the manner that I just heard Mr. Howard say, that looking at the total annual price and cost, and also the likelihood of how many times a week we might possibly rent this property out in order to raise that, cover that cost. And so I had anticipated using, being able to rent a building three times a week. That's probably, to be honest, pretty optimistic, optimistic, but I didn't want to be gouging people either. So I used that theory and came up with the numbers I did, and I also broke it into periods of the day, so that you might be able to have two different functions in the course of the same day, if people had, say, somebody wanted a morning meeting, someone wanted an evening meeting, and still be able to raise that dollar amount for that day, that we need to cover the cost under those assumptions. I admit, as I just did, that those assumptions are probably optimistic, and we probably won't meet that goal, but we want to start somewhere, and we want to start somewhere, not gouging people, as has been said. So I thought we'd start with these numbers, suggested these numbers, and then make the recommendation that we do this for the next six months, every six months, for the next year, eighteen months, till we get a good handle, because also, if for some reason the building is used more, that's likely to increase costs that we need to buy, rebuild, covering. So I thought this was a reasonably fair number, without giving the building away. My other big change, difference, I guess, is that Mr. Jar does suggest philosophically that we should give a break to nonprofits, and I don't think we should give a break to anybody other than town government uses where it's a town government facility. If we had need for meetings or something to be held there, certainly not going to try to charge a board to, to hold their meeting there, but I don't see the difference between nonprofits and profits. We have a building that's costing the town money, that people need a place to meet. If they don't meet here, they're going to meet somewhere else and pay whatever that costs them. So I think these rates are probably lower than they can get most anywhere else to have a meeting. And so the bottom line is, I think these are relatively reasonable here, and yet geared towards trying to recoup the amount of money that it costs us to operate this building on a yearly basis. And that's enough said. You have the numbers, I believe?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just comment on.
One quick thing. Could you just reiterate what the actual numbers are, so the people at home know what kind of a range we're talking?
I was recommending that on a period of time, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., it would be $30. From 12:00 noon to 4:00 p.m., it would be $40. From 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., it would be $50. And I think it was pointed out that right now, our regulations don't have an end time, so we probably should correct that, whether it's 10:11 or whatever we decide. That's what this would say as well, so that they're in compliance with each other. And that if someone wanted to use the building in a time period that took in two times, say from 3:00 o'clock to 10:00 o'clock, or 1:00 to 3:00, then they would pay $70, basically trying to make up the two times, the two fees that we could have collected individually. So it's $30, $40, $50, or possibly $70 if somebody has basically an all-day event.
Thank you for that. Mr. Jar, do you want to take a moment?
Yes, I just, I'm concerned that we're, we're not separating nonprofits from profits. I, I think we have enough wiggle room in the numbers to be able to do that. That's number one. Number two is, if we followed through and said, okay, we're not going to rent this building out at all, you still have to have utilities. We have to keep the, the building heated at some point, otherwise we're going to have frozen pipes, and the deterioration of any buildings, and I know you all know, goes rapidly downhill if we're not doing something there. So to say you want to recoup it by the number of times, you're not going to get three. I think if you look at the number of groups that utilized it, which we didn't have much control over before this past summer, if you're lucky to get twice a week, you're lucky. I'm concerned that we're charging different rates for different times of the day. I'm not sure why that would be. If you want to do it for four hours, you needed it twice in one day, you could have a morning and an after, or an evening meeting. I'm not, I guess I don't understand why the difference between $30 in the morning and $50 at night. I mean, what, you need heat, you need heat, if you're going to have it in a winter's day. So my suggestion was, for things under two hours, you charge them $10, and then if it's, break it into either less than four hours, or really greater than four hours, so it didn't matter if it's five hours or six hours, that you knew the charge, a nonprofit rate or a for-profit rate. And then I also covered the outside displays, if you were using electricity, a $10 charge for a week.
My, my reason for breaking it down is that we actually want to try to encourage use, so we can cover the costs, because as you say, right now, with the number of times it's been used, it's not likely to be able to do that. And if somebody was wanting to meet in the morning, and someone wanted to meet at night, between the two of them, we would get the total daily cost that we need to recoup, and that by breaking it up, instead of charging that person that wanted to have a morning meeting, the full $70, when they're not going to use the building all day, and we still have the possibility of leasing it to another party later in the evening, we can do that, you know, more often. We can get people to, people that right now say, well, I'm not going to have a morning meeting, it's going to cost me $70. But if it's only $30, we can, and we can lease it more days, and we can get, get, and the end of the year, we can raise more money towards covering that cost.
I just want to say, why are you charging different rates for the same hours, different times of the day?
Because.
If you're charging.
It's basically just a demand, what is likely to be the man, the man for morning hours, afternoon hours.
But we don't know that. You said yourself, you don't know, because people, we haven't tracked it.
No, that's how it generally would be in, in the world today, right? The number of people that want.
I'm involved with rentals at my church. We have a huge hall, and it's done by hours. And if we want to have two events that day, if one has it in the morning, one has it in the evening, it's the same rate. It just depends on your four hours, where you can take your four hours. You can get two in a day. We wouldn't charge someone more in the morning, in, I mean, more in the evening. We wouldn't charge someone more in the morning, and, I mean, more in the evening, or middle of the day.
But you're also trying to make some money at the church to cover the church cost, we're just trying to break even.
The other part is we're gonna revisit in six months.
Well, that's my suggestion.
Whether the charges are- Does our board members now understand the both concepts here?
I don't have the numbers in front of me, Mr. Chairman. I have a question.
Go.
How much do we charge today to use the Morse House?
Nothing.
Zero.
How many, how many reservations do we get a year?
There's a small school group that meets in there weekly.
That's fifty-two, yeah.
Well, they're not every day, you know, they break up in the summer or another period, so you probably get, they're there maybe twenty, thirty weeks a year. But they're sort of only doing it because we're looking for, they were looking for a low-cost space, you might lose them. The Republican and Democratic town committees meet there a couple of times a year.
So would you say that, would you say that the number is fifty or less?
I would say it's less than, probably less than fifty.
So Mr. Plasko's assumption is that we're gonna get three a week, that's a hundred and, a hundred and fifty-six, and we get-
I think that's kind of aggressive.
We get fifty or fewer with zero, charging zero, and we're gonna increase, triple that by, by instituting a fee program?
So there's two, two sort of scenarios here. We've never really marketed the Morse House as a property to use if you're looking for these type of events. So you could, in theory, see a growth, because we start putting it out there that, hey, it's available for these functions if you'd like to use it. So that might lead to a growth in your rentals of the property, increase your revenue. But some of the current users who have been not paying may choose not to operate there. So there's a couple civic groups that occasionally have a meeting there, the town committees that they may just-
With all due respect, we don't lose anything if they leave, because we're charging them any, and our goal, and our goal is to cover our costs.
Correct, you're absolutely right. But so, you, you may see more or less, or, or less usage. I don't think we're gonna get hurt either way, so we can adapt a fee schedule. If we find out that in six months, nobody's paying fees, and nobody wants to use the building, even with an increase in the marketing, then the board comes back and makes an adjustment. If we end up seeing more use, and we start covering the cost of the building, that's a benefit to the taxpayers. I mean, it's, it's not an enormous amount of money, and there are no critical uses currently going on. That swinging one way or another, increasing or decreasing, is really gonna hurt the town one way or another.
Mr. Chairman, I'd keep the fee simple as, I'll, I'll go with whatever you want, but I'd, I'd keep it as simple as possible, at least, with as few cut-ins and striations as possible.
And what does that mean? They have two options.
I'll, I'll take the simpler one.
Oh, jeez.
I don't know, you tell me.
Well, no disrespect to Mr. Plasko, but I think Mr. Hajar, and I don't throw many compliments his way, has done a pretty good job of covering all the bases. Mr. Plasko did bring out some points, but I would be happy with Mr. Hajar's recommendation.
Oh, jeez, let's move ahead.
Yes.
Either, either way, can we have as part of the motion that we're gonna revisit this every six months for the next eighteen months or so, till we, till we know how to settle in on it?
Just also a recommendation, do you want to give any groups that are currently using it or scheduled to use it a certain amount of time before you require they pay the fees? So if you have a road or a group, for instance, that's a meeting there every month, do we just send them a letter next week saying, starting your next meeting? Or do you want to give thirty, or sixty, or ninety days to some of these groups?
I think, I think last week we said the, it was scheduled for the next day, so that we allowed that to happen, and that after that, it would depend on what we do with these fees. So my assumption was they could charge the fees at that point. I think you might make a difference, some discussion on the group that's been allowed to use it as a school for, are they meeting every week?
Generally, yes.
You might want to give them a little time to adjust to the change.
So would that be a separate motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, so can we vote on the, on the proposed rates first, and then with, I think there's a couple of things-
Well, you really vote when you want to make them effective, I guess, is all I want to know.
Mine was-
April first.
I think that's a good idea.
Immediate, that's what we said last week, that we'd wait, we tabled these others till we saw what the fees were.
No, I think it should, I think it should be immediate, yourself, I mean.
I don't like to keep dragging things out week after week after week after week. So if I have my preference, I'll make a motion that we accept Mr. Hajar's recommendations with a starting date of April 1st going forward.
No, no.
Would you be open to amendment to March 1st, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I would.
Second, I'll second the amendment.
Okay.
So again, as I repeated, with the start date of March 1st, and I think it only affects one particular meeting here, Patty Bailey's-
Not gonna affect her, she's March 29th.
Okay, March 29th, so it doesn't really have any effect.
Just like any landlord, you want to give somebody at, at least some notice that they're-
That's why I said sixty, but majority rules. So does everybody understand my motion?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Do I have a second on my motion?
Yes, you do.
You already do.
Okay. All in favor?
Your motion as amended.
As amended, March 1st. This one, I think it's done. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Jar, thank you, Mr. Plasko.
So there are, on the same subject, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if it's now, but we need to put it on the agenda, there are two rule changes that we need to talk about. One is, there is no end time in our rules, whether it's gonna be ten o'clock, eleven o'clock, whatever it is, I think that needs to be discussed. And also, someone brought to my attention about not allowing lit candles inside the building, which I, I would agree with, so-
You actually can't do that in a public building, anyway.
I think we just need to state that clearly, so-
Seems to me like you're volunteering to amend.
Yes, I just come back with something, but if we could put it on next week's agenda, I will have it in the, to Christine, and by the end of this week.
That would be great.
It's not complicated.
And before you move on, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Morse House applications, AMB.
Who's gonna be next?
I'll second.
Okay, a motion to approve the two we mentioned earlier, Mr. McKee and Mrs. Bailey, for their usage of the Morse House. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you both for your input. So that brings us, hopefully, to Mr. Mazuko's land.
Just get rid of his selectmen's minutes.
One more thing. Selectmen's minutes for review and approval of the board for the minutes of November fifth, two thousand nineteen.
Emotion approved is written.
Emotion approved, and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Finally, discussion of land use, Mr. Manager, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If NCM could bring up the presentation we have, we just have a short presentation. If the board remembers, actually, at this point, probably six months toward, a year ago, we had a discussion on looking at town properties, if there's anything available that could be sold or changed into some other use. We actually had a great intern, Anthony Pataro, who's a Norwood High graduate, Norwood resident, worked on this project for us over the summer. You received a rather lengthy report on two topics, one on the possible locations for pocket parks in town, as well as one on some, what we would refer to as land of low value, but just small, lower, no-value parcels in town. So we're gonna start with a quick discussion on pocket parks. There's four lots we're gonna look at, that the board may want to decide to do nothing, to turn into, look into turning into a pocket park, after working with the neighbors, or possibly one or two of these lots could be available for the town to sell. If we could go to the next slide. In brief, when we talk about a pocket park, I know that's a little difficult to read on the screen, we're just talking about a small park, usually less than an acre in size, that often is created from a vacant lot. Pocket parks should be accessible to local residents within a few-minute walk. You're not talking about a top lot, you're not talking about a park with an extensive trail network, or somewhere that folks are going to drive to and park their vehicles. You're just talking about a small neighborhood lot. If we could go to the next slide. So when we talk about examples of pocket parks, these are just images from around the country. They could be something simple like this, which is just a small flower setup, next slide. This is an example of a little bit more of an elaborate pocket park. This is actually in Montpelier, Vermont, so sometimes you have outdoor seating structures, maybe you have some tables, you'd want a little bit of green space, maybe a little bit of lighted space, but again, something that's designed to fit on a small lot. If we could go to the next one. Sometimes it's as simple as just a little bump out like this. It's actually not a bike rack, that's just a table, but sometimes you just put a few tables or benches, or a couple of bike racks. Again, small being the operative word. If we go to the next slide. And sometimes it's as simple as just taking a space and putting in a bench or two, and some landscaping, or maybe some trees. If we go to the next slide. There's five sites we've identified, it's actually really four sites, one of them just happens to be two parcels next to each other, and we have some images of these. I'm actually gonna jump right into the images, rather than read the addresses, so we can get some context. If we go to the next slide. The first one, this is the corner of Meadow Street and Fortune Drive, this is actually conservation land, it looks like an undeveloped lot, which is really what it probably was, but it's actually part of conservation land. If we could go to the next slide. Here's some images of that lot, it is just an empty lot at the end of the street. This would look like a great lot to sell, to be a buildable lot, however, it's conservation land, the process to actually pull something out of conservation land and go through the legislature is quite complex. So this is lot, site one. Pros and cons, as you can see, it is graded, it's directly adjacent to nearby neighborhoods, it's technically conservation land, so only passive work could be done, would look great as a buildable lot, but again, it's currently conservation land, so the process to change that would be difficult.
So would we also have to go through then, if we thought we wanted to put a park there?
We can do low-impact, sort of no disturbing of the ground, low-impact-
But they have to prove, that they have to let us do something on their property?
Yes, generally if it's conservation land. If we could go to site two. Site two is actually the corner of Howard Street and Morse Ave, it's a triangular lot. If you could go to the second slide there. Here's a couple images of it taken during the summer, there's a little bit of green space there, it's right in a dense neighborhood. If we could go to the next slide. It's a very small area, it's a dense neighborhood, there's already some landscaping in place, it would be perfect, so some low-key site amenities, a couple of benches, maybe you look at whether you could place a tree, or some different shrubbery to enhance it. If we could go to site three. Now, site three's along Grant Avenue, it's actually what looks like a lot that did not sell at some point in time, that the town has acquired, and the town has owned for quite a while. If we could go to the image. Now, it's, you can't see in the image exactly what the section of the lot is, but it has been some, there has been some tree growth, there's been some encroachment by the neighbors, which is understandable. The town, I believe, has actually owned this lot for quite a while. Many of these lots, some of them were just lots in a failed subdivision that didn't sell, that the town took the tax title. In some cases, I think it's either this, or the Sterns and Elliott Street lot that the town's owned since the thirties.
Both, both, Grant Ave and Sterns and Elliott, I think, owns since the thirties.
Since the thirties, so these are lots we've held on to for a long time. If we could go just briefly to the pros and cons on this lot. There's some encroachment by abutting properties, it's a dense neighborhood, as most of our neighborhoods are, it's close to the Callahan School, so it's a great lot, but it has been a lot in between two homes in town for eighty years at this point. Sites four and five are really one site, it just happens to be two parcels, it's the corner of Elliott and Sterns Street. If we go to the image. Now, there's a couple images here, you'll notice there are some mature trees there, however, it is a lot of overgrowth and brush, again, a tax sale lot the town took a long time ago. This actually is a buildable lot, it does predate zoning, the challenge being that it's been in that condition for many years. If we could go to the pros and cons. It's unused and overgrown, it's in a dense neighborhood, it's near the high school, we would need to likely relocate or replant some older trees if we wanted to do something there. If we go to the next slide. So what we should do with these parcels, and I know it's a little tough to read on the screen, the board should discuss interest in each parcel, there's really three options for each parcel, one is, of course, leave it alone. Again, some of these parcels, we've done nothing to for the last eighty or ninety years. You could look at selling some of them, conservation land, doesn't really make that an option for one of them, or look at whether or not we want to do a pocket park. If we're interested in selling, we'd have to go through the process of checking for municipal use, declaring it surplus, putting it out to bid, auction, et cetera, and how we actually are able to sell property depends on how the town took the property, taking it in tax sales is different versus taking it in a purchase. If we're interested in a pocket park, my recommendation will be, we should solicit neighborhood feedback, engage in some sort of a design charrette, and submit possibly next year a CPA-
I think that should be the very first thing we do.
Correct. Submit possibly next year CPA funds to develop, design and develop, or add it to a capital plan if we wanted to look at doing something. If we could go to the next slide. I figured we'd hold here, the board could ask some questions, or just discuss what you'd look at for next steps, before we talk about some of the low-value parcels, which is a separate project.
If I could just start this off, Meadow Street of Fortune Drive, there were some problems there historically in the past, and I won't get into it, but I've talked to some of the neighbors who are not really happy with it. So again, we really have to canvas and find out what the neighbors want. If they're objecting to it, it's off the list.
That's critical for a pocket park for a couple of reasons. One, we want to make sure that the public's involved in these decisions, but pocket parks really are about that specific neighborhood. You generally don't see use from another neighborhood, you don't create parking with pocket parks, so you're not talking about creating a new large park or a top lot that people from other parts of town are going, come to, you're really talking about something that's gonna impact the neighbors within five to ten minutes. So I think that, that public outreach, once the board wants to move forward, or decides how to, is important.
We had some problems with people meeting there, coming off of ninety-five and various highways, and that was a meeting location for particular individuals, and that had been cleaned up. And I don't want to create a place where it's gonna be comfortable to have that happen all over again. But again, it's up to the neighbors. Howard Street at Morse Avenue, I seriously don't have a problem with it, but houses on either side of the street, and a house just to the back of it, it's a triangle, a piece of property, again, it comes down to neighbors. Grant Avenue, I think it's a sellable lot if we chose to sell it. Sterns and Elliott, I may get some kickback on this, but it's only a block from the high school. I don't want to create a spot where kids have been occurring before school, after school, and cause a problem in the neighborhood. Again, concentration on the neighborhood and the people that live there. But again, that's also a buildable lot, for, say, a long duplex house, or left side, right side, not up, down, but left, right. My opinion, I think we should go to the abutter's list, find out who abuts all these properties, send them some kind of notice, and go from there. Members of the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Thank you. That was, that's, that was a good presentation, Mr. Mazuko, nice and concise, thank you very much. Just, my initial impressions vis a vis these, these properties as pocket parks versus anything else, I agree, we have to check with the neighbors, but if it were, if it were just up to me, I like Howard Street and Morse Avenue, I think that'd be a good location. I don't like Sterns and Elliott for a couple of reasons. One is, I, I think it's too close to the high school, and would become a place of congregation for high school students after school. Never mind the fact that you've got a whole lot of green space in front of the high school in Shattuck Park, not just down the road. So I'm not really crazy about that, I'd rather sell that lot. And then Grant Ave, I'm open to whatever you want to do on that. It's actually kind of a nice lot with a tree in the middle, but if we do want to sell that as a buildable lot, we really ought to take some time, because there's one neighbor, I think, that's been using it for a long time. But anyway, that's just my opinion, one in favor, one opposed, and one, I'm open to whatever you want to do. Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Jar?
Yeah, I mean, when this first came out, I thought Tony and his folks did a good job of outlining the possibilities and what it is, and I, I think this is a good opportunity to develop neighborhood involvement in really small parks. I don't think it's ever intended to use would be to, you wouldn't have the room, or to have these large gatherings, number one. I think the neighbors, this is one way of helping the neighbors have some nice area that they can go to, to sit, or just to talk, you know, two, three people, and I think they'd be the first ones to tell us that this is becoming way too busy, or whatever, so I'm, I'm gonna trust the neighbors. But I think, as you said, Mr. Chairman, that's the reason why you have neighborhood meetings. I, I think the triangle piece would be difficult to, to have, because it's not conducive to having people gather, even if it's just, it's the couple. I mean, the way I envision is, you probably have a couple benches, maybe some type of small light, I don't know, whatever, but I'd be curious to see what it would look But I'd be curious to see what it would look like. I am in favor of the others. I think putting the two lots together at the corner of Elliott and Sterns Drive, again, subject to the neighbors, I think that's a golden opportunity for us. Without thinking we have to sell everything, there are some folks that are far away. I mean, we talk about the park off of Nichols or close to Nichols, but it's, there are no benches there. No, it's not, it's really a walking, people walk their dogs and walk. I think this provides an opportunity where people can actually sit and talk, which is a good thing, and that's the intended use. So, other than the triangle piece, I'm in favor of doing the other three, but I'm open if the folks at the triangle want one, hey, let's go for it.
Well, I think in that particular, as you refer to it as the triangle at Morse Ave. and Howard Street, I think that would be pretty much a neighborhood thing, strictly neighborhood, because it's kind of an area where you don't go up that street unless you live up there.
They're all too small to be anything other than a neighborhood thing. And I think that's the purpose of the pocket park is you're just providing some green space that the neighbors could feel like, oh, this is ours, and they will help take care of it.
Designed to be walked to, no parking, so.
Right.
If we can just, and I'm going to get you, one second. If we could just use the reference to, there is a pocket park here on Washington Street, directly across the street from St. Catherine Church and the rectory. There's four benches there, and from there, you step down into the municipal parking lot. But we cleaned that up a couple of years ago. So, when people are downtown, they want to take a break and sit down and have a cup of coffee, talk to each other. That's the purpose. So, that, if you want to get an idea of what a pocket park could be, that is something you want to look at.
Absolutely.
Any other comments?
Question.
Sir?
Howard and Morse. Do you know who maintains that now? Does DPDW mow that?
I'd have to double-check.
Because I go by there a lot. I haven't happened to see anybody from the town mowing it, but they might be on a different schedule.
Might be the abutter.
I always thought it was the neighbor's house right there that was part of their property. It is pretty small. But then again, a lot of these pocket parks are small, and you've got one little piece of shrubbery there. You add a bench or two, and some more shrubbery at the other end, and you've got a pocket park. If the neighbors don't object to it, it could go there. I just thought it was, surprised to learn it's town property.
You don't notice it on the picture, but some years ago, maybe even now, there was a sign there, "No ball playing," because kids from the neighborhood would come and play ball to the irritation of the neighbors.
Of the neighbors, yeah.
Again, it comes down to the neighbors in all situations. We're here for the neighbors, and we're here to do the right thing, so.
Sterns and Elliott, I'm a little, I always thought that was a little too narrow to be developed neatly, but to be sold for that purpose. But at the same time, I don't see it as a proper place for a pocket park. I think it's too close to the high school, Shattuck Park, even, well, it's a little further down the street, I guess, but the Veterans Park on 1A. Just seems to me like we have quite a bit of stuff in that area. And if there's any locations that we could sell to get some additional revenue for and taxes back on the tax roll, I think I'd be leaning towards that. I'm still open, but that's where I would be leaning this evening. And Meadow sounds like a perfect thing, as long as the neighbors and the conservation commissioner are on line with it. That seems like very developable.
So, to me, the question is, our next step is, do we conceptionally go forward with some type of potential outline that we could present to the neighbors?
I think that's what we should do. Get something in writing and present this to the abutters.
See how they feel about where they want to do this.
What's their feelings on the whole thing.
Are you simply going to ask them if they're interested in a pocket park as it's basically being presented? Or are you going to be asking them what they'd like to see done with it, including a pocket park?
That would be the way to phrase it, but I want to know if it impacts them in a negative way.
Right, right.
Well, we could schedule a series of public meetings with the abutters. And at this point, if the board doesn't have that strong a feeling, one way or the other, we just present it to the public the same way it's been presented to the board. Here's an opportunity for a piece of land that's in your neighborhood. Here's some potential actions we could take, or what do you think?
I have no problem with the public meetings, gatherings, the civic, wherever it might be, the police community room. But a lot of times, people say later on, well, nobody told me, so.
Well, we'd send out abutters notifications, I think.
Exactly, if we did the combination of the two.
500 feet from each one, and just send letters and say, come to, you know, not even an information session as much as just a suggestion session of this is in your property, this is town-owned. Many of the residents may be surprised to find out that it's town-owned, and what do we think we can do with it?
Very good. Anything else?
Well, if he schedules those meetings, which is obviously the logical next step, is there some type of either photographs or drawings that we can show a sample of what a pocket park looks like? I know we're showing the areas in which it can be developed, and you can verbally probably describe it, but visual, when it comes to parks, is everything. When someone says, oh, so that's what you mean, is this bench or this place to sit down with trees or whatever it is, something that.
I think some of the images we had, we can make sure we have blown up on a screen to show folks that this is what it could be. I mean, we don't want to spend any money yet on landscape design. At least, I don't think the board wants to until we have an idea, but it's really up to what we want to do.
Include a picture of this pocket park on Washington Street. It's kind of vanilla, but maybe they prefer vanilla rather than bushes and trees.
There's not enough space to get too elaborate on anything, but we can also get some really good images. And we probably need to space these out over the course of a couple of months. We, right now, the weather's actually been reasonable for January, and the ground is clear. But we don't want to necessarily have folks coming in in February if there's a foot of snow on the ground saying, let's look at a park. So, we may want to wait till the spring.
This is not time-sensitive.
Correct. Do a couple of evening meetings, and we're probably going to want to schedule them out over the course of a few months because I don't think we want to do all four at once, nor do we want Pocket Park Week where we do them all one day at the other. We'll schedule them, take public input, see what the folks' responses, and then go from there. If the board wants to do that, we can work on that. We'll probably target sometime in the spring for it.
That's a good idea, Mr. Chairman.
Sir?
So, do you need a motion?
No, sir, that's a good idea.
I think Mr. Plasko has a pensive look in his face. Are you thinking of something?
I am not, sir.
He's not thinking.
I'm waiting. I thought Mr. Morning was going to say something more.
There's no smoke.
It was a vacant lot, please.
Is it appropriate to have a motion that the board support the gentleman who's developing the next steps of creating for the neighborhoods to consider proposals for potential pocket park development in all, I'm going to call them four locations because four and five.
Yeah, it's really four locations, even though one's two lots.
But the most important function, again, being representation from the neighborhood.
Yep, I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed unanimous?
Thank you. If we could go back to the presentation. If we can advance one more slide, two more. There we go. So, one of the other projects we undertook over the summer was identifying a lot of what we call low-value parcels. And the state actually has a process when you sell what's known as land of low value. I don't want to confuse us with that specific process, but we really took a look at a couple of different databases and what lots are out there that the town owns. And these six examples here, and there's about 25 or 30 of them, are examples of lots that towns just come into possession of bits of land here or there over the years. They're effectively worthless. None of these are buildable, and these are just six examples. But you'll notice that sometimes it's a one- or two-foot strip in between two properties. It's maybe a two-foot strip at the back of somebody's property. We could go through a process, in all total, I think there's maybe an acre or two of land between a couple dozen parcels. We could go through a process of attempting to either sell or gift these to a abutters or split the land up among the abutters. The benefit to the town is it sort of cleans up our real estate holdings that we're not holding on to dozens of parcels that are effectively worthless. What the property owners would get is technically on their lot card, they're gaining some land that otherwise would be worthless to them, and it's worthless to us. Some property owners may say, I effectively have the town owns two feet at the back of my yard. Why would I want to pay anything for it? But they get to add it to their card when they go to sell the land as well.
In some cases, historically, they've been upkeeping those little strips of land.
Correct. I'm sure there's some folks who don't realize that maybe the foot or two in between them and their neighbors, or a couple of feet at the back of the yard actually isn't theirs. We would never want to sell or gift any of these parcels to anyone except the abutters. There might be some case where two abutters may want to do it, but certainly you wouldn't want me owning a two-foot strip in between Mr. Bishop and Mr. Plasko's house. Wouldn't be conducive to good neighbors. But for the town to go through this process, if we could go to the next slide, it's valuable to do, it's something we should do every 20 or 25 years to sort of clean up our process. But it is time-consuming. The process itself is costly in the sense that it's a lot of time and there's research involved. We would need to start after town meeting because it will take a lot of staff time to do. But there's a benefit to cleaning up some lot lines. Some folks may be able to get a little piece of land added to their parcel that otherwise would be completely worthless. There may be cases where we want to add some to town parcels as well. And some of this is just cleaning up, similar to the Elliott and Sterns lot, where we really have two small lots that should just be in one lot. It's not the sexiest of processes. There's really no cash involved in it for the town. Over time, we'll make more money in tax revenue if we're able to turn a half an acre back to tax-paying land. So, what I want to know is the board's initial thoughts. And if you do desire that we go through this, the understanding, we'd probably start it after town meeting. And there is some time and cost and complexity to the process. It's one of those items that you assign to the staff, and we sort of get the grumbles that there's an awful lot of work to get rid of property that nobody really wants, but worth looking into cleaning up. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have and take the boards in for us.
Anything from the board? I think we have all the information.
I was going to say, with the pictures that were provided to us, and having visited many of the sites, they're just not big enough even a pocket park. So, I personally am in favor of getting rid of these parcels, get them off our non-tax roll, and provide the opportunity for the abutters to obtain them.
Just a question.
Mr. Maloney?
You're showing six images on the screen, but you know, there are a lot of them, right? I mean, we're pointing out, they're all over the place.
Yeah, we own little blips of land here and there. I think the first step, if the board wanted to, we could probably do this prior to town meeting. We rearrange that list and tell you, these are the ones the staff recommend we can get rid of. These are ones, there's a couple of them that are technically four or five lots that we own that we may just look to combine, or there might be a street edge. We do have to go through somewhat of a detailed QA QC policy on the town side to make sure that we may have the corner of Mr. Howard's lot, and we may say, well, why do we own a quarter park of Mr. Howard's lot? Let's sell it. But wait a minute, we pile snow there in the winter, so there's a reason to do it. We've got to check freesement, check with the light department. So, it's time-consuming, but it's worth doing. It's not something we're going to do every year. So, the first step would probably be if the board wants to move forward, at some point in the next couple of months, because we are getting into budget season and then town meeting season, we'll break the list up into, here's the ones we think we can get rid of, and then here's a couple that for different reasons we think we should. And then we start the process. We're going to do some deep research.
We'll get as much done as we can in one fiscal year. Maybe revisit the matter again. That's fine, all right.
Lastly, has the neighbors input?
Yeah, we would. I mean, we'd only actually sell most of these parcels to the abutters. Depending on how we acquire the land, you sometimes have to go through a public auction process. We may want to auction some of them. But the idea is that, again, a two-foot strip of land in between your house and Mr. Plasko's house, we'd reject a bid that was a third party if Mr. Hajar comes in and tries to buy it. That's just not in the interest of maintaining a good neighborhood to have.
You don't want the thorn between two roses, not sorry.
Exactly. So, we would look at that as well. And some of these would be just directly approaching the one person whose property impacts and saying, are you interested in acquiring this, or would the town be looking to gift some of these?
Now, is this for information, or do you want to vote on this?
Is the board's desire of us of starting the, going down this path and undertaking this project?
Mr. Plasko?
I'll give a second.
On the motion?
On the motion.
I just want to say there might be a few people out and watching this meeting that might be jumping up saying, there they go, short-sighted again, getting rid of the property. We need the property. We don't need the property any longer. This is very small parcels that, as the manager has been spelling out, is really of no value to us. At one time, we were trying to get every square foot to be dealing with the so-called 40B issue and our land. But with the couple of parcels that we're intending to finish purchasing, being the so-called Saint Streets property and the Walpole Cemetery and Pleasant Street, and another big parcel that might be available to us in the future, which would be many acres, we're well beyond that point. We're already over the 1.5 that we need in that land to add, to use land for it to meet that so-called safe harbor in the 40B as it is. And then with the addition of the parcels I just mentioned, we're more than safe in that area, so we can afford to clean up in the manner that you said. So, I would support it at this time.
Okay, and I have a motion in a second. If there's nothing else, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed unanimous. The rest is all you, Mr. Plasko.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop.
That brings us to the manager's agenda, and hopefully you have nothing.
Just one item, if I could. Brian, if you could bring up an image on the screen. So, just a shout-out to an unsung hero. This is Gary Shore, who's our Assistant Public Works Director. He is retiring at the end of this month. He has served the town for over 43 years. And I say unsung hero because one of his responsibilities is ensuring the safety and integrity of our public water supply. And he's very quiet. He often works behind the scenes. He does not like a lot of public recognition, so we made sure we had to get a picture of him to put up here at a board meeting. But we want to congratulate him on his retirement and thank him for 43 years of outstanding service to the town. When you drink clean, safe water in Norwood, which is something you do every day, Gary is the number-one individual who we have to thank for that. He's been doing it for a long time for us, keeping us safe and in compliance. And we appreciate that. We appreciate his long years of service to the town. So, if you see him, give him a big thanks for his many years of service.
Mr. Plasko?
Yeah, I think as we do all long-term employees, when they retire, I'd like to show our gratitude that we prepare appropriate plaque or recognition for his service. I'd also like to say with firsthand knowledge, he's a wonderful neighbor, and he's better looking than that.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion in a second for a proper plaque, if you will, to present to him. And I would ask the manager to reach out to Superintendent Public Works to kind of coerce him into coming in. Anybody that works 40 years in this town deserves to be here to receive accolades.
Absolutely, I will do that. It'll be a struggle to get him here. They had a struggle to get him to celebrate his retirement with a lunch, but we will certainly pressure him into doing that.
Well, don't kidnap the guy.
Well, respect his wishes. And I think we do him a dishonor by not giving him the respect that he deserves.
Well, Mr. Chairman, to that point, I was wondering if the board would be willing, in March, you have five Tuesdays, I believe, so we normally wouldn't meet the fifth Tuesday. Would you like to do a special Tuesday meeting? We would hold it in Memorial Hall for the specific purpose of recognizing employees who have retired in the last year. We have a lot of employees who retire, many of whom have given decades of service to the town. And we have no problem bringing them in here weekly meetings. But I just want to know if that's something you'd be interested in doing at the end of March, at your last March meeting. We do a special meeting. We'll have NCM there to film it. We'll have the press there, and really give out some of these plaques and recognize folks. We don't want to take away from anything the individual departments do, but maybe that becomes an annual tradition where we give them a chance to talk, and we can actually give out the plaques and do it all at once, but.
It's a wonderful idea, but the same reason we don't see a lot of them before us, they just don't like that public recognition and might have a hard time pulling it off. If you want to work at trying to make it work, I'd be happy to participate.
So, that comes down to a date.
And what kind of period of time, how far back are you going at this point?
I think we would do the last year with the idea that every year we do some sort of recognition. And I think it's important to make it an actual posted meeting of the board. That way, it's filmed, it's on TV. That's the only item on the agenda that's taking time to recognize some of these employees because every department does something different. You know, the police department does something one year, once a year. We don't want to change that or take away from that, but this might be a good way to do that.
I firmly believe that we should show respect every day to the employees, not only this building, but the entire town. And I'm sure my colleagues agree. I have no problem with it. But on March 17th, at some point in time, I was going to make a motion to remove that from our schedule because we have five. That being St. Patrick's Day night, I think people would rather be out somewhere else than sitting here wearing a green hat.
That certainly is the board's discretion. What we could do is we could still have four meetings, and if you so decide, on the 31st, unless there's any items of critical importance, we could make that the only item on the agenda.
Again, my personal opinion, I think that would be an excellent choice because that would be the last evening for Mr. Howard and myself. So, we could all.
That's right.
And maybe there'd be a recognition there, too.
Wave to each other going out the door.
I'm going to make that into a motion then.
Second.
I have a motion to have a special meeting on March 31st.
In Memorial Hall.
In Memorial Hall, and hopefully the acoustics will be adequate. And we'll assign you to put that together for us, if that's okay.
Do you want to do the meeting at 7:00 or regular time?
You're working on the details, I want to know. You work on the details and let us know.
We can work on the details. It's minutia right now.
More than a few days, yes.
I mean, I want to get to bed before 10 o'clock at night that night, if I could.
What? We'll try.